So let's get, uh, let's get going. So, uh, call to order the Sodex City Council meeting for Monday, December 28th, 2020. With the clerks, please call the roll.
Dean? Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
And Beckett?
Here. Next order of business is approval of the, uh, regular city council minutes of December 14th. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris Peterson.
We approve the regular city council meeting of December 14th, 2020 minutes as sent.
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, corrections? If none, with the clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yeah.
Beckett?
Yes. Motion has passed unanimously. Next, for the minutes from our special meeting held on Wednesday, December, what date was that? Twenty-third. Proposed minutes. This says proposed minutes for December 14th. Let me get, there we go. I got it now. Okay, so I have a motion that's from our special meeting on Wednesday, December 23rd.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting on December 23rd.
Beckett.
Okay, we have a motion by Truster, support by Dean to approve the minutes. Any questions or concerns, comments? If none, with the clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Beckett?
Yes, motion is carried unanimously. For the public's benefit who may not have, uh, access to reading the council minutes or aware of it, primary purpose of their meeting of last Wednesday was to approve the contract for our new city manager, uh, Ryan Heiss. Uh, we also had a few other items that, uh, we wanted to discuss and make motions on, but primarily the purpose of the meeting was to approve the meeting, uh, of the contract for Ryan Heiss. And that was proved unanimously. We now have a new city manager. It'll be starting on February 1st. Uh, he was also joined by his daughter and his wife. So we got to meet them via Zoom. So we're all looking forward to Ryan's arrival and, and working with him, starting on February 1st. Uh, that also kind of included my mayor's comments wrapped up into those, uh, comments. And so now I'll, uh, ask for city managers' comments, please.
And a couple of things. Uh, one, there's been a couple of questions, why the Eurasian water mill foil report from the advisory committee was not on tonight's agenda? There's two reasons for that. Uh, one, the attorney hasn't finished his review of the contract. Um, if you remember, we are recommending that we contract with aquatic doctors joining the city of Douglas. The attorney has the contract now and he is reviewing it. Uh, the second reason was because I want to get a complete picture of how we might offer the same service to some of the shoreline landowners. Uh, the, the committee is recommending that the city do the big two islands in the middle, but there, it has also been some growth of the mill foil along the shoreline. And the contractor will extend the city's price to the shoreline owners. And I just want to work out how exactly the best way to do that is so that when you do approve the project, you, you know the complete scope of it. So I do expect to have that on the first meeting in January, and that will be plenty of time for uh, getting the permits and so forth and time for spring and, and not holding Douglas up or anything like that. So that will be coming. Uh, the other thing I wanted to tell you was, uh, the side rot grinding will start, excuse me, the week of January 4th. Uh, you might have noticed that Scott and his crew painted a lot of yellow raised sidewalks in the fall and then didn't have time to actually do the grinding. And as long as the snow plowing holds off, uh, for long enough, then they're going to start this, this winter, first week of January. Um, and I believe that is all I have.
All right, okay. Thank, thank you, Karen. Uh, agenda items, agenda changes, additions. Uh, Karen, you want to uh, review adding the, uh, drinking water asset management grant application?
Yes, um, a couple of months ago, we became aware that there is a, a new grant out there. And I asked John Moxie of Fleece and Vandenberg if it would be a, a good idea. That, um, Daryl of the Kamazoo Sewer and Water Authority brought it to my attention. And, uh, John Moxie said, yes, that would be very helpful for the city. And so we, we got it back a few days ago and, uh, it's now an addition on, on tonight's agenda. And I apologize, it's a late addition, but I had some questions and, and the mayor had some questions. And so we wanted to have the answers before we put it on. Got the answers. Daryl was very helpful in some of those. Um, Scott Dean with his contacts at Eagle were very helpful. And of course, John Moxie was very helpful too. So we've added that. I suggested you put it at 14C.
Okay, uh, are there any, uh, disagreements with adding this agenda item to new business, uh, 14C? If none, we'll let the, uh, revised agenda stand as presented. Uh, no further agenda items, counsel? If not, we'll move on to guest speakers. Lieutenant Brett Enfield, Allegan County Sheriff's Department.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, good, Brett.
Um, I just got a couple of things. Um, so far, so good on, uh, your, the city deputies having COVID or anything like that. We've had a couple, uh, deputies, uh, over the last couple of weeks, uh, in the county as whole, uh, actually, uh, had contracted it. So we've had some, uh, some personnel issues and stuff, um, with that, uh, that we've had some scheduling issues and so forth that we've had to work through. Uh, but knock on wood, uh, you guys have, uh, stayed clear of it so far. Um, I, uh, in anticipation of getting the quarterly numbers to you, I, I did run the numbers today just to see where we're at. Uh, um, last year for the quarter from October to January, we were at 360 calls for service and so far this year, we're right at about 323. So when, uh, the end date gets, uh, here on the first, uh, when it officially closes out, I'll, uh, I'll tally that up and, uh, as requested by you guys and, uh, send it out to you. So, um, but yeah, I was kind of surprised that, uh, they were pretty similar, uh, between the year to year, especially with, uh, uh, the, uh, bars and so forth closed. Um, and also, uh, I, we had worked with the fire department, uh, over the last, uh, week, we cut, went, uh, did radio testing with, uh, Douglas and, uh, ourselves at the high school and, uh, middle school or, uh, I mean, elementary school, um, and, uh, completed that. Yeah, as a cooperative effort. Um, yeah, and that's about it, I believe. So, oh, also, sorry, also, uh, New Year's, uh, I have a couple of reserves scheduled just in anticipation of uh, any issues in town and stuff like that, which could easily be sent home and so forth. But just, uh, out of precaution, we had a couple of extra guys come in. So that's about it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right, uh, counsel, do we have any questions this evening for Brett? Okay.
Oh, mayor.
That's got.
Yeah, just a thank you to Lieutenant Enfield. Uh, you know, the data you've put here, it, it's really, it's really helpful. In, in fact, you've done it in a graphical format. I think it's really useful to us in terms of planning for the future. So a, a big thank you to taking the time to, you know, put it in, in such a, um, kind of user-friendly format. So thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. I'll, I'll try to do that, uh, this time and stuff. I, I know I did not get the, uh, calls for server or the calls, call logs, uh, to the, to you guys today. I just, uh, this last couple of days have been pretty, uh, challenging with, uh, staffing and stuff. So I had, uh, other issues to take care of. So I kind of fell on the back burner. So I'm sorry about that, but I can try to get those out here in the next week or so. So we've been having three, pretty much standard calls and stuff. And actually, it's, you know, um, you know, for not having the bars open and so forth. I mean, we've, they've actually stayed, uh, somewhat busy. So.
All right, okay. Any other questions for lieutenant? If none, uh, thanks Brett. We always appreciate hearing from you and, uh, happy new year to you and your, your department.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Moving on, our next, uh, agenda item is, uh, public comment. This is where we invite the public to address the council on any, uh, agenda item. Please limit your, your comments to three minutes. When recognized, uh, please identify yourself in the community in which you reside. Was there anyone wish to address the council this evening?
I do not see anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, nor do I. All right, thanks, Erin. Uh, moving on to next agenda item is, uh, looking for a motion to approve the, uh, accounts payable this evening. Do I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris Peterson.
I move that we pay accounts receivable total of, for all vendors, $468,050.10.
Second, okay, we have a motion by Peterson, a second by Louis to approve the, uh, accounts payable as presented. Uh, one comment is that of the $468,000, $393,000 are tax pass-throughs collected by the city on behalf of other, uh, entities. Um, so that being said, uh, would the clerk please call the motion or the roll on the motion, please?
Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Beckett?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Uh, going, uh, continuing through the agenda, we have no introduction of ordinances this evening. There are no, uh, public hearings. Uh, next, uh, agenda item, uh, of, uh, first one will be the new city website demo by our city clerk, Erin.
All right, give me one second. We're going to switch over to website here. Okay, is everybody able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Like we're set.
Sorry. I make it fit here. Okay, so, uh, in a nutshell, we, um, had planned to build a new website to begin with. Um, but the, the desire to get it done quickly got suddenly prioritized when the existing tool that we are using to edit our website is no longer supported, nor has it been for the last several years. Um, and then as a result, my ability to edit it is sort of crumbling and disintegrating in front of my very eyes. So, um, I've been working kind of madly to try and get all of the existing content from our current website, which is really extensive, to be honest, moved over to the new interface. Um, the main goal, one of the main goals, I should say, was to make it easier to navigate because for a lot of people, things are very buried and it's difficult to find what they're looking for. Sorry, my screen is not coordinating me here. Sorry, they keep making changes to. There we go. Um, anyway, so we have pages like this and news and notices where we've got just a mountain of information buried in here, but nobody can find it or navigate to it. And so we get a lot of questions at the city about just where basic information is. And so without further ado, um, I have been working on this now for at least a couple of weeks, if not months. Soon as the election ended, I pretty much started working on it. Um, and in addition to wanting to make it easier to navigate, we wanted to make it such that various people could have editing privileges. So for example, the kids at the Oval Beach Gate would be able to have access to edit the Oval Beach page on a phone app and they'll be able to update current conditions, whether or not parking is full, that kind of stuff. Um, and then I guess we'll just kind of start taking a look here. Um, so this is the new homepage. I have to special shout out to Kim Zino, who was very gracious in letting me use many of her images here. Uh, each of these, uh, is, and it's an image, but it's also a button that you can click and there's text. And that is to kind of accommodate, you know, some people like to navigate through menus to get to what they're looking for. And some people are more visual and want something to click on, depending on whether you're working on your phone or a tablet or a desktop, it's different the way you kind of interact with the website. So the idea is that we have a combination of the text menus, but then also the different visual things that you can click through to. Um, a calendar is new. We've got a calendar that will keep everything that we've got going on for the entire year here. And then you can click on these and it'll give you further information. We'll be able to attach agendas and links to videos and upload minutes when they're done. Obviously, we've, I've added a lot of photos, make it more visual. We've got a little news and notices blog where we've got various news releases that are coming out or information. It's like the Oval Beach boards and committees. Um, sign up for the newsletter. And then there's links at the bottom to help people navigate as well. So that's the homepage. Um, going into, we'll start with city council. We don't need to go through each of these, but if anybody has a question, feel free to stop me and ask. Um, one of the features that I think is really nice about the new website is there's a, there's a calendar for each of the committees that only has the meetings relative to that committee. So if you only want to subscribe to the city council calendar, you can go to the city council page and only subscribe to that calendar. If you want to go to, you know, if you want to have every single meeting we've got, then you can go to the overall calendar page and you can subscribe to everything. Um, while we're here, I'll just show you, it's got some different visuals for people who like to look at things in different ways. Um, and that prints out nicely as well. Um, and then you've got your information about who the council members are. Ideally, I'd like to eventually get to the point where we have a portrait of each of you, but this will link to open an email to the council member. This links to the phone. This is a form that will go to the city manager. If someone has a communication that they want to send specifically for the packet, that they want to go to all city council members rather than emailing, this form will kind of come in via email and then it also feeds into a database backend, which is really convenient at the end of the year. If you want to do any kind of reporting, you know, you could um, add checkboxes here to ask if they're inquiring about a certain topic, if there's things that are, you know, you can, at the end of the year, you can look at it, end of the quarter, whatever, you can look at that. Um, and then more links. At the bottom of every page, I'll point out, there's a place to put website feedback. Um, if you find any spelling errors, typing errors, something mislabeled, something that needs to be cropped, there's still a lot of nitpicky things that I'm doing to try and get it finished. Um, but so each of the different boards has, um, one of these pages. And then the idea is that you will have the information that's relevant to that particular um, committee. So the tri-community recycling ad hoc has your calendar. Um, and it's also got the results of the survey that they just put out on Facebook. And then it's got your, um, link through to their Facebook page. Um, and then this is just various pages. I'll go look at the trash and recycling page since I see guard, guard nodding along. We get a lot, we get a lot of calls wanting to know what the schedule is for recycle. Um, so that's easily accessible and pricing. Recycling is no additional charge. Links to Republic to make it easier to get to them. Um, and then know what to throw. This brings you over to kind of some materials that they've given us access to. This is someone's local interesting art that Kim Zino just found and sent to me this morning. Um, and then we've got a couple of videos in here or whatever other content that committee would want. And one of the beauties of this website editing interface is that I can give one particular person or multiple people on that committee access to edit this page. So if you want to add content, change content, you want to see something else and you don't want to email me to do it, you want control, I can give you that access. So that's kind of exciting. Sorry, this is really giving you a hard time. It's not letting me click through to some of these for some reason. Um, so anyway, about boards and committees, you've got each of the calendars and each of those, who the committee members are, all the information, employment, uh, floodplain, harbor management, history of city hall. Just mentioned that the, um, Saga Tech Davis History Center was very gracious to let us use some of their images. Got some really neat stuff that they let us pop in here this morning, actually.
There's, uh, Oval Beach, oh, there's Oval Beach. Let's look at it.
Yep, so we'll go over to Parks and Recreation. So like I said, the idea is that you're trying to create, or I was trying to create an option for someone who wants to click through on a phone. Or if you're on a phone, it's kind of inconvenient to go through these different menus. It's easier to click on an image. Um, so each one of these is a hyperlink, the image as well as the text below it. Um, and each of the parks has its own little page. So we'll go look at Oval Beach because that will be one that'll get a lot of traffic. Um, this has got some links to current kind of weather conditions. When it's open, we'll have a section here for the kids that are working the beach gate that they can put in, um, whatever, you know, their current conditions are, whatever the flag swimming status is. You can update the parking to say the parking lot is full or whatever. Um, more of Kim's amazing images.
Do we have a live cam out at Oval that's showing parking or showing beach conditions at all?
We do not because we don't have web out there. Our only option to access the internet is through phone lines and cell phones. Um, so until we have that, we can't do a webcam. However, I have been in touch with, um, the news station who gifted us the webcam that's up at the top of Mount Bald Head. And if we can, um, get that connected, they said we're, we can use that, but I don't think we have internet up there anymore. Um, so they're looking, they're talking to their engineers about possibly placing a new webcam, but internet's the main issue there that's kind of limiting. Um, and then here's more of the History Center photos, the Oval Parking Lot, which it was named for the beach. This is what it looked like when I was a little kid when I lived there. Um, okay, so each of the parks has different pages and you've got your overall page that brings you through to navigate to each of them. And this is kind of a work in progress. I'm still working to kind of add links and add content to it, but I'll, it's much farther than the existing, um, website. We already looked at calendar departments. Um, we'll look at Scott because he's actually got some content up here. So Scott at the Department of Public Works actually has a calendar of, uh, brush and leaf pickup and also trash. So people can subscribe to that if they want to have that. They can click to report a street light out. Little information about the junk week, leaf and brush pickup. Um, and then this is also new. This is a form to, again, it'll go to the city manager that will allow people to submit feedback or request to the DPW because a lot of times people are contacting the DPW directly and they're oftentimes out in tractors or doing who knows what, but not, not an easy access of email and cell phones oftentimes. So that gives people a way to get ahold of the city manager with a request. Um, and then each of the different departments has kind of its own page. So the fire department, um, we'll go look at their form since that's what's next up. Or maybe we won't. Sorry. What's it doing here? All right, we're not going to look at that one. There it is. Okay, so the, um, one of the main benefits of this website is we can embed forms. We can't do it for all of the things that we take forms on. Some of the things are government forms or whatever that it will still have to be a downloadable PDF, but for anything that can go through an online form, this will come in via email, but it also fills into a database backend. So the one that I was going to pull up was for the police. They have a, um, property tracking that they, basically people can submit a request to ask them to look at their property while they're out of town, check on it. And they've got all of the fields that they need to look at and they can download it in an Excel spreadsheet. So as they're going through town, they've got all the information in one easy access place. So they're not flipping through papers or however we're managing it now. So there are, uh, tons of forms that are done and many that are still in the works, planning and assessing are yet to be really developed, but a lot of the general ones are kind of in here. Um, and the hope is that we kind of continue to expand this for whatever we don't currently have on the website. This, the primary goal was to get us to be able to pull down the existing site and put this one up. So this is kind of a starting place, but it's a pretty good start. Um, and then we've got links to various outside organizations. This one's Sadaba. We've got Consumers Energy, Fire Department Library, so on and so forth. The list goes down. Um, and then this, I think, will be really handy for people who are trying to pull information related to meetings. It gives you one easy place to go get a link for each of these meetings. So if there was a video, the video link is there. If the minutes are done, agenda and packet, anything that I have available is up there. I'm still kind of working to build this, um, archive for all the other committees, but I have the 2020 city council up. And then moving forward on the calendar, these will actually, when you click on it, it pops open. You've got a link to your agenda. And then I put just some meeting highlights in there so that people can search through the old calendar. Once this, again, will be moving forward, not, I probably won't populate backward just because it'd be too time consuming. Um, but moving forward, we'll have an event for every meeting that we have and it will be kind of a consolidated place to get all of the information relative to that meeting. And then it's obviously easy to share out. And then we've got our news page.
Would you be sharing that on Facebook too then?
Would I, would I be sharing?
Yes.
The calendar? Um, no, I hadn't intended to, but I certainly could. That is one of the options that you can, um, share to. So you've got a Facebook share, Twitter, Pinterest, Instagram. Save, you can save any individual meeting to your phone or your computer. Get a hyperlink to it or, um, email it to someone. All right, so then we've got our little blog page and this is where we'll put any news releases or kind of new information that we're dropping out. And then these kind of categories will continue to expand as we're adding to it. Right now, it's kind of bare bones. Um, and then you've got the contact, which is, you know, each of these links through to our email. Or you've also got a contact us form, which will go to me. Um, and then I'll forward it accordingly. And then some of the kind of legal stuff that you have to have down here, just an additional link to, you know, FOIA and tax record search and stuff like that. But each of these is also a, um, a link to take you to the page. So that's nuts and bolts, pretty much where I am with that. What's still outstanding? I still need to finish a handful of forms. There's a handful of PDF documents that I'm still working to load. And the archives are not currently on the website, so I think we can make the switch and then I can continue to work towards getting that archive completed. There's photos and media to be tucked in here and there, um, filling in kind of blanks for what we didn't have. Um, and then proofreading it, making sure that there's not a lot of, I have found a number on the existing website of, you know, typos or spelling errors and things like that. So I'll need help kind of proofreading. Um, and then we need an event submission policy because under the new thing, people can, um, actually submit an event. So we'll have to put some guidelines or you will have to put some guidelines rather around, um, what you want to allow people to share so it doesn't become cluttered with every single thing, but community events would be nice to put up there. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Hey, Kylie.
Erin, I love this. This is amazing.
It's real good.
I love the calendar. I love uploaded minutes. I love how you have links and photos. Um, I'd love that you're in-house and you can update this or others have access to it. Um, this is really a huge, I mean, this is just monstrous improvement. I, I'm. I'm just thrilled.
Fantastic, that's what we're shooting for.
I would love to see you use one of your images on, behind the calendar on the homepage too. That's my only note, but.
We can do that.
I mean, I just, it's so, this is just, I love how we could take this information and share it and put it on our calendar, put it on Facebook, it's, this is great. It's great fun.
Good, I'm glad you like it.
Thanks, Aaron, well done.
Thank you.
Anywhere else?
Yeah, Scott. Mayor, quick question. What's the tentative go-live date for this site?
I'd like to flip the switch by January 1st. I've got a handful of things that I need to get done to make it. Like I said, the existing site has, it's, it's kind of a sleeper because when you look at it, it does not seem like there is that much information here. But when you actually drill down into the pages, there's tons of content here that's, some of it legally has to be there before we can go live with the site. And some of it is just stuff that has to be downloaded because the interface that we're using is kind of crippled, as being generous at this point. But I'm kind of half pulling it down from right clicking and downloading and half, I was, half of the archive I was able to pull off of FTP. So my hope is in the next day or two, I can get this done and then our web, our IT partners will be able to make the switch and it should go in a matter of hours usually.
That's great. I, I think it probably warrants a press release, I'd be happy to help you with it. Put that press release over. Yeah, and we should, oh, yeah, no worries.
Should say thank you for writing this.
Yeah, no, no problem. But I think if we do a press release on it and we flip it over to maybe the Sagatuck Awareness Group, kind of the local Facebook group, you'll get some really great beta testers that will find any errors that we might have. As you said, there's a lot of content there and, you know, it's going to probably take more than one set of eyes. So I think if we launch it and we promote it on the, on the local Facebook page, we could probably get a lot of good feedback and a lot of traffic right away. So I'm happy to help you with that.
Thank you, I would appreciate that help, actually.
Any other comments from council? Well, it's really interesting, that's a good job, a great job actually. And taking up the initiative on your own is impressive. So we appreciate your extra work. And I'm assuming it's kind of a fluid process going when council and the community continues to review things. I'll see things that might have been overlooked, like Scott referred to. So I would guess that if council has any corrections or things that have been missed or things they'd like to add, all they have to do is send Aaron an email and go from there.
Yep, there's actually, I should have mentioned this, sorry. I don't know if I can still get to it. There is, at the bottom of every page, sorry, because now I made it smaller and you can't see it, website feedback. I won't zoom, let me click on it though, sorry, give me a second. It's an actual form that you fill out and it asks for some basic information. But one of the things that's nice to know is if you're on a phone, tablet or desktop. And then there's a place to put in what kind of feedback you've got. So if it's just, hey, I like it, it's nice, or if it's on this page, there's a typo and you need to fix it, or this content is hard to find or missing or whatever. And that way it goes, I get an email and then I also get it fed into a database, which makes it easier for project management purposes for all these forms to keep track of.
Hey, Aaron, this is Garn. So can we access this one for you and just go through it? And if we find anything, just let you know, is there some way that we, we can get a whole link to this?
Yes, what I would like to do is send out this link to city council and have you guys have a first pass at it before we go live. And then I'll work in the next couple of days to tidy up the things that need to be done in terms of documents getting loaded and pages getting finished, forms and stuff like that. And then, and then, yeah, I'm ready to make the, make the switch.
Cool.
So I'll send you an email after the meeting with the link.
Good. Any other questions for Aaron? All right, thanks, thanks again, Aaron, good job, good job. Moving on to discussion item B. The Fire Department ISO upgrade. Dan Fox, our, one of our fire district reps, is going to fill us in on this news. Danny out there?
Yes, hear me?
The floor is yours.
It's a fairly quick update and it's, and it's good news, certainly for Sagatuck. The ISO is the sort of third-party rating office that scores communities based on risk related to emergency services, fire services. It is subscribed to by some, but not all, insurance companies. So in some cases, there may be a direct relationship between an ISO rating and someone's homeowner's insurance cost. In other cases, there may not be, and we're not in a position to say which is which. That's something that individual homeowner have to work through with, with their insurance provider. But in any case, the good news is that the ISO ratings, the lower the number, the better the rating. And the ratings for the fire district, including all of Sagatuck, were lowered, improved from four to three, which is the highest they've ever been. And one of, if not the highest, ratings in all of Allegan County. As you probably know, the fire district comprises some, almost 30 acres. I'm sorry, square miles of, of the area. You see their maps and whatnot in your, in your packet. The one exception to the three rating is an area of the fire district, the far southwest corner of the district, which is the area basically, if you will, compromised by the washouts. The result of which is that the distance emergency services have to travel, road distance, to those areas increased to a point that affected their rating. And that area has a 10 rating. But again, it doesn't concern any resident of Sagatuck. So basically, that's the long and short of the ISO ratings. It's a, it's a great credit to the, to the district and certainly to the residents. The rating includes obviously all sorts of components related to the equipment, personnel and so on and so forth, the procedures and what have you. And the, this distance from the fire station is one of those elements that obviously adversely affected the far southwest corner, all township properties. I can answer, or at least attempt to answer any questions you have as it relates to that.
If there's any other page you'd like me to reference, Dan, please let me know.
So Dan, this is Garn, I've got a quick question. So that southwest corner there, is that actually more easily reached from Ganges Fire? Do you know? Would it help them that they're closer?
Sorry, probably a horse apiece, Garnet. The other issue as to Ganges has to do with equipment available at Ganges versus the equipment that's available in the district. So that's part of it. I'm not sure if there's an issue of jurisdictional issue because of the, you know, one coming from outside the district and one not. I'm not an expert on the ISO, I can report what they, I can report the data, but I can't tell you how they get to what they get to, so.
Got it.
I think I can kind of shed some light on that. Garnet and council is that the, these protecting classes are based on road miles from the responding governmental fire department. So even though Ganges Fire Department might be only two miles away, by the number of road miles from the Saget Fire District building to these areas and it is in excess of five road miles by GIS. And if you're outside that five mile radius, you get bumped from a protection class three to a 10, which is, is pretty impactful from insurance rate. But that's just, that's just the way it is. I've had the opportunity to be kind of involved on the periphery, providing insurance information to the fire district. And it appears that once some type of new access road is constructed out in Saget Township, then there will be some relief for that area. But it's all about the impact of the washout. You know, making the road miles from Saget Fire District, you know, excess of five miles to, to these folks in that redlined area. Further comment, this is a, this is a, this is a big feather in the cap for the fire district. This is not an easy process. To have the entire fire district, other than that redlined area, and a lot of those areas have no fire protection, oh, no, you know, no sprinklers, I mean, no fire hydrants, no municipal water supply. And the real benefit, or the real reason, I think, is the fact that we have mutual aid agreements. So the, you know, that's why you see two or three fire departments responding to a fire emergency in Saget or out in the township. So these mutual aid agreements, the amount of water that these responding fire departments can carry with their tankers, et cetera, the, the fact that Saget has gone to a quasi-full-time department, meaning we do have people on staff 24 hours a day, you know, every day of the year. All those things go into, to play with setting this, this protection, this protection class. 10, 10, 15 years ago, Saget was a seven. They then went down to a five. That was a big drop in insurance costs. Then they went to a four and now, after further review, they're at a three. I don't think you'd go any lower than that, to be honest with you. So that, that's, that's good news for our, for our community.
I would also say that the, again, not that it's a concern of the city council, but the issue of trying to create a, an access road to allow emergency access to those areas that they can't get to now because the trucks can't traverse past the washout is not an easily solved issue. It's a very thorny property rights issue and what have you. So one of the comments that one of the people at the department made is that this action, the, the result of what we've talked about here, that 10 rating versus a three elsewhere, may be enough of an incentive to cause the property owners, and I believe the number is about 30 parcels, 30 homes or buildings or whatever in that, in that redlined area, to come together and find some way to agree to a route. Because that, the access road is going to have to go over somebody's property, all their property is owned. And that's what's going to have to be done if, if the, if that red area is to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
I'm following up on what Garnet said, maybe I just missed this or I'm not quite understanding. Is Ganges closer by mileage, but we're not considering it? Or is it as far away or it doesn't have the right equipment? Why was that?
The, the rule, the strong steadfast rule, it's the road miles from the corresponding, the responding fire department in the community in which you reside. So the fact that the Ganges Fire Department might be within five road miles, for instance, does not have any impact on the, on that classification determination.
Thank you.
Also, keep in mind that all of Ganges Township is in this protection class and also, because they have no fire hydrants in, in their community at all.
Thanks.
If that helps?
Yep.
All right. Well, any other questions for Dan? Dan, are you going to stick around and give any additional report under our boards and commissions? Or is this, or you have nothing to, you know?
I have a number of things on there too.
So you'd like to, you're going to visit us again at, at that time?
Your pleasure.
Yeah, okay, we'll call on you during our boards and commissions report section of the meeting. All righty, thanks, Dan. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. I will move on to our new business portion of the agenda. First item of business is the release of the Ballas-Selman donation. Karen?
At your workshop last Wednesday, you discussed releasing Jim Selman's donation back to him. The donation was for the construction of a performing arts band shell in Wick's Park. With the public outcry against putting a new band shell in the park, he has asked for his donation to come back to him. The amount is $100,000 plus it has earned interest of 1,800. In your packet is a donation rescission, termination and release agreement between the city of Sagatuck and the David Ballas Jim Selman Living Trust. Our attorney has reviewed it and has no issue with it. And with your approval, his donation will be returned to him in full.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the donation rescission slash termination and release agreement between the city of Sagatuck and the David Ballas Jim Selman Living Trust.
And supported by Ken Truster, so I got him, motion by Lewis, seconded by Truster. Should we be putting in the total amount of the, of the rescission, of the donation rescission amount, Karen?
It wouldn't hurt, it is referenced, but it, it would not hold at all, so you may amend the motion.
Yeah, do you mind doing that, Garnet?
Sure, so move to approve the donation rescissions, termination and a release agreement between the city of Sagatuck and the David Ballas Jim Selman Living Trust in the amount of $101,800.
Support that, Ken?
I do.
Okay, good. Any other comments from council? If none, would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Beckon?
Yes.
A motion carried unanimously. Karen, I trust you'll, and Peter will get this checked out to Mr. Selman with all undue haste.
I'm sure Peter will.
Next agenda item is a review and a motion to accept or deny our fiscal year 2019-2020 audited financial statements. So again, this is the, the audit on the prior, or prior year, fiscal year that ended on June 30, 2020. Karen, you want to pick this up or Peter, I know Peter's on with us?
Yeah, I would, I would like to say that the, the auditor's opinion is what's called a clean opinion. And this is the best opinion you can get. It means that Peter's doing his job, that we're not any significant auditor adjustments and that when he gives you a report, you can trust the accuracy of them. I believe the auditor is zooming in to talk about this. And the other thing I wanted to say is I, I made a mistake in the motion. You don't approve or deny, you're just going to accept. Because you can't really approve them or deny them, it is what it is. So anyway, motion to accept the audited financial statements.
Hello, this is Ken.
Yes. Ken, your last name again?
Berthium.
Well, welcome, Ken. The floor is yours.
Okay, okay, there I am. Nope, that's not me. Hopefully you can see me, all right? I see.
You're good.
Okay, well, good evening, your honorable Mayor Beckon. I hope that I pronounced that correct. And members of the Sagatuck City Council. I am pleased to have this opportunity to present the audit for the year ended June 30, 2020. Our audit work here went, again, this year went very smooth. We encountered no difficulties, problems or differences. We received excellent help and cooperation, of course, from the city staff. We received excellent help and cooperation, of course, from the city staff. The staff was especially helpful this year, considering that we had to do the work on a remote basis. And we were able to accomplish that with their help. There was a lot of emailing and sending of data and so forth, which helped greatly. We, again, of course, found that the city bookkeeping and internal controls are in good shape. As a result of our audit, we issued the unmodified report, as was, was stated. It's our opinion, they're on, it's on page one and two of the booklet that you should have. You have a PDF, I think, of the report. Page one and two is the opinion, unmodified, which is the best possible. Okay, now I'd just like to briefly go through a few of the pages with you, the highlights of a couple items. And going ahead to page seven, this is, okay, thank you, Peter, whoever brought that up. This is the condensed and comparative statement of activities. It's on a full accrual method of accounting, which means it includes everything, all the funds. The report shows that the net position increased for the year, $1,610,399. A nice increase, of course. Property tax revenues stayed steady, as you can see there. $2,493,000 compared to $2,452,000. The taxable SEV was actually up 8.7%, but the total millage rate had been decreased by about 6%. So consequently, those property tax revenues stayed about the same. The public works expense, as you can see, was down from the prior year, down about $215,000. It appears that there was less spent, actually spent, than what the original budget had called for in that category, and also recreation and culture expense, you can see, went down from 715 to 481,000. Again, the expenses for the year were, were less than, turned out to be less than what had been planned. Okay, going ahead to page 10. Page 10, here you see the statement of net position. This is a, the big picture condensed report. It's like a balance sheet for your city as a whole. It includes everything. It's a full accrual. So as of June 30, we see here that the city, in all of its funds combined here, held cash and investments of about $8 million. A nice cash and investment balance. That's, that's up from the prior year, about $1.6 million. The other thing I noted here was that the net pension liability is reported at approximately $235,000 there. You know, the city has been very proactive in this area. In the last five years, the city has paid in extra to the MERS trust fund, about $489,000, more than what was required to be sent in, and that was good because you worked your pension down to where, right now, it's, at that point in time, the pension was approximately 88% funded, which is very good compared to other cities and places in the state of Michigan. So that was very good. Moving ahead to page 12. Page 12, okay, that's the balance sheets for all of your governmental funds. Of course, the city only has governmental fund types. You don't have business type, like some places do, water and sewer funds, and so forth. So you have governmental funds. Here, again, now this is a modified accrual method of accounting, so when we look at funds, we're only looking at current available resources, current assets, current liabilities. And on that basis of accounting, the city again shows a very healthy condition as of June 30. Your general fund, total fund balance as of June 30 came in at approximately $4,199,000, as you can see there. Some of that fund balance has been committed for parks, a million dollars, and some is restricted for the Rose Garden, $171,000 approximately. So this is a very good situation. The, when you look at general fund, fund balance, it's always looked at in terms of like, well, how, how does that compare to your annual budget needs? And as you know, your, your annual budget is approximately $3 million. And so with a fund balance over $4 million, you can see, you're about, you're over 100% in terms, 100% of your annual expenditure budget, which is very good. And page 15. 15, no. I should say, no, there it is, 15, okay. The, here we see that all your governmental funds, statement of revenue, expenses, and changes in fund balance. It reports that the general fund revenues last year were approximately $3190,000. Expenditures were $2186,000 approximate. So this resulted in a, revenues exceeding expenditures by $1,4386. So that then was added to your beginning fund balance to result in that $4,199,000 ending fund balance. You can see there also the two funds. You have Major Street, Local Street. In those two funds together, you have now approximately $467,000 of fund balance. No, weren't that. That was not correct. That was the excess revenue for the year, but you're, you can see the fund balance, okay, you had $572,000 in Major and $1,661,000 in Local. Yeah, that's over $2 million of fund balance set aside for the streets. And then page 18, final, my final one I wanna look at here. On page 18, here we see a statement of net position for the Internal Service Fund Motor Pool. This is not a governmental fund type, so it's separated like this. And that fund at June 30 reports a very solid financial condition with unrestricted fund balance showing there of approximately $601,000 with about $606,000 held in cash and investments. So that's very, very solid. Okay, so in conclusion, I thank you and everyone there for the opportunity to work as city auditor, and I welcome any comments or questions you may have.
Council have any questions for Ken this evening? I'll have, I've got one for, for Ken. You, you mentioned about the, the fund balance being in excess of 100% of our, our budget.
Right.
Okay. In years past, we've heard it from various different auditors that it's fiscally prudent to carry a certain percentage of your ongoing budget in reserves for emergency reserves. What's your position on that?
Well, the GFOA once said that your fund balance minimum should be 25% of your annual budget expenditures, you know. That's a minimum. I think that, you know, to what you really should have should be more like 50 to 100%, you know. I mean, you never know, there's, could be unexpected things come up, but a 50% of the annual budget would be considered good, and it'd be, it would be similar to other cities like Sawatuck. So you are, you are in very good shape. I mean, you have a very substantial fund balance. And you've shown some of that to be committed for the parks.
Right, right.
So that's one way to, to tap, tap that down a little bit to say, okay, yeah, we built up a big fund balance. Because fun, you know, taxpayers, I guess taxpayers don't, they don't want the city to be in the business of saving money and piling up a huge fund balance. So you've, you've indicated you've committed some, and that's good. That's a good approach to that.
Correct. Any other, other questions?
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Scott?
Yeah, ju- just to follow up on the mayor's comment. So, I mean, we had projected a fund balance of $8,567, and we ended up very nearly a million dollars over that. Was this all related to we decided funds for, for a major capital project around the parks, or are there other factors that I'm not aware of that contributed such a huge delta from what we projected and what we actually came back with? I mean, it's a good problem to have, but I'm sure what's, you know, what's behind this, this million?
Yeah. What? That's a good question. In the report on, on page 42 and 43, there's a budgetary comparison schedule there, 42, 40, yeah, there you go, thank you. You see what you originally budgeted in your, in terms of expenditures and what the actual amounts came in. I think there was some big variances under it kind of seemed across the board, but like Parks and Rec on page, that's on page 43. You anticipated spending $399,000, you spent $279,000, you know, there's $120,000 there. Capital Outlay, that's the big one right there. There's a line kind of squeezed in there. Capital Outlay was projected at, on the amended budget, final amended, was $632,350. And it was only $52,680 spent. So that's, that's a variance of $579,070 there.
And what is that? What, what, what didn't happen there?
I think that question is probably better off for, for Peter to address, and I think he's prepared to, to address this. I think it's because of Mount Ballhead funds available for Mount Ballhead improvement that we never got spent, never spent, because we kept positioning ourselves trying to get grants for. But Peter, I don't know if we want to get into too much depth on this, this evening. That would be a, this is, I think, a, a financial report and review and kind of a tutorial from Peter on city finances here in the near future, once our new city manager gets on board, is what I was hoping to have. But, but Peter, can you just go ahead and fill in a couple of the missing pieces on this?
Yeah, Ken is right. There's, it's a multiple of savings and a lot of the cost centers. The major thing that was never got off the ground was the Mount Ballhead renovation project, and then all beach gate revenues, we were through, were way up there, like $300,000 more than we ever anticipated that they were gonna be here with COVID, because this fiscal year ended June 30, so we had all Memorial Day through June 30. Those five or six weeks, we've never had the gate sales, the season pass sales that nobody, I mean, everybody was at the beach here this summer, so that that's a big factor, and then not doing the Mount Ballhead, and there was a lot of other small things that added up throughout the entire budget that, you know, had, creates this million dollar surplus for fiscal year 20.
Yeah, I think the North Park Street Road Project got moved in. Those funds were allocated for this budget year that were never spent.
That's correct.
That was a couple hundred thousand bucks.
Mr. Mayor?
That shows on a different page on the.
Yeah, that's in the road funds.
Yeah, but that's still wrapped up in that, that large fund balance, though. Correct? I mean, it all adds up.
No.
No, it doesn't? Okay.
No, that's in the major and local street balance.
You can move that up to page 44, you can see that.
Okay, Chris, you got a question?
I, not so much a question. I just want to thank Peter again, because we've sat through several of these years, and it, it's always looked good, and this one looks especially good. And I think a large part of it is, is what Scott was trying to find out was, where did this money come from? And Mayor, I agree with you. I think this would be a wonderful workshop, because we are coming to the point where we need to align our priorities going into the next year. And one of the things we need to do is get off on a good footing of how much we actually have, and then go through and prioritize to see where we can do with that million dollars worth of funding. I just think this is an excellent start. We're in good condition, and I think it should be, should be an interesting conversation for the council to determine priorities.
And, and again, keep in mind that this was a snapshot of the city's financial position as of June 30, 2020. For the 2020, 2021 budget term, that's, you know, period fiscal year that started July 1st, we've got a lot of projects built in to that, into that budget. Road projects, city hall improvements, I believe Mount Ballhead is still in there. So those are the things that I think we'll work our way through with, with Peter's guidance at, at a future budget and finance workshop.
And I, I go back again to, I think that there's been different projects that have come up, that when we did align some of these a year, two years ago, they weren't on the forefront now. You know, there's been changeover. I think it's just a good time to take another relook at all those priorities.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to accept the City of Sawatuck audited financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Peterson to approve or to accept the audit as presented. Any further questions? If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
And Beckon, sorry.
Yes. Okay, thanks, Ken. If you don't mind me calling you Ken, it's easier to call you Mr. Berthum.
Ken is perfectly.
I'm a buffoon. Because you can call me Mark instead of Mr. Beckon.
Okay.
So anyways, thanks again for your work. We appreciate it. Now, I believe we have a contract with you for a number of years yet.
Couple more, I think, too. I think two more.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Okay, thank you, Ken. Have a nice evening.
Okay, you too. Bye now. Bye, Peter.
So our next agenda item, the drinking water asset management grant application. Karen, you wanna start us off on that?
Yeah. Again, I apologize for the late submission, that with the holiday and getting it late from our engineers, it, it just didn't make it. We had too many questions to, to put it on. The drinking water asset management grant is a new program through Eagle. It helps communities comply with the requirements of the lead and copper rule. In the city, we have 907 services, 203 contain lead, 198 were previously connected to lead, 229 are unknown, and 277 do not contain lead. The, if we were able to get this grant, we can categorize and know, know the unknowns right now. Which ones actually do we have lead, which ones don't? All these unknowns would, would become knowns. In addition, the grant would be used to survey work, to pinpoint the exact locations of hydrants, valves, curb stops, to improve the accuracy and linkage of our geographic information systems. We would have a comprehensive asset inventory, a condition assessment of all those assets, and we'd have a formal capital improvements plan and asset management plan. We do have those now, but they're very rudimentary. This would really pinpoint things, what we need to do in the future. And it would also include a water system rate analysis. We got an email from Daryl. Uh, we got an email from Daryl this morning, this, this morning, this afternoon. And he was very much in favor of the city going after this grant because of what it could do for us. The amount is two hundred and nine thousand we're applying for. If we did get that, it would be a hundred percent grant funded, no local match. Uh, of course, it's a new grant, so we don't quite know how they're going to score them. And, but we know we won't get it unless we apply for it. So if, if you agree that this is a good grant to go after, the motion is to allow the mayor to sign the, the grant on behalf of the city.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Scott, you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I, I did speak to Karen a, a bit about this, and I did some research on Eagle's records. Um, yeah, you know, state of Michigan after the floodwater crisis, um, established one of the stringent lead and copper rules in the nation. Um, I did some research, um, with my colleagues at Eagle and, and yeah, you know, the, um, the current inventory statewide are lacking. So there's a lot we don't know statewide about some of these, um, historic lead service lines, which is that go from the water main to the, um, to, to the plumbing that someone has in their house. So uh, the state has instituted something called a fifth liter draw. It's a more stringent lead test. Um, Sagatuck has put that data in. I did look that up for us. Um, we are well within state, uh, requirements. I believe our last fifth liter draw was two parts per billion. Obviously, always want zero for, right? There's no safe level of lead. But two parts per billion is very low. The state standard currently is fifteen and will only go down to twelve parts per billion. So, um, I think we have very good drinking water based on the data I've seen. But nevertheless, getting more data to target these service lines for replacement is, is great. So, um, I, I think it's great that the team at, um, at, at the Water Authority is, is going after this, um, this opportunity.
Okay, all right. Um, there's a lot of information that, that's available. I don't know what's necessary to bring it up this evening. There is a little bit of confusion, I think, at between, uh, the, the engineers who submitted the, uh, the annual report last, a year ago, uh, which was the lead in the inventory report. Uh, did you get any further information on that? I know you, 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 you checked some of the records last week and showed that we had zero, uh, lead services in the community. Yet we've got proof through engineers and Cal Lake that, that the, the reports were submitted on time a year ago.
Yeah.
I think it's some clarification issues is, is all that, uh, that Daryl at Cal Lake will be working on with our engineers.
Yeah, I think it's probably worth for them to reach out with their counterparts at Eagle. Um, I, I think it's given that this was the, the first go-round of this new program statewide, um, that there was probably a communication difficulty between a lot of the municipal water, uh, systems and the state. So I'm not sure people were putting their data in appropriately because, yeah, I see a zero on the state database for us in terms of it, but I think there may have been a confusion around, well, we just don't know. So there were various, of suspected, you know, or, or, or un- unsure if there's a lead service line there. And that could be where the anomaly is with the data. So, um, I, I, I would just urge the team at the Water Authority to reach out to their counterparts at Eagle and make sure that we, we do have the right data into the state because I wouldn't want us to, um, to lose out on an opportunity i- if the state thinks that we're in great shape on lead service lines. And I don't, I don't have the answer to that. All I know is our sampling data looks good. The actual draws that they've taken from, from a representative sample, uh, two parts per billion is very, very good compared to.
Good. Yeah. So.
Oh, that being said, unless there's further questions.
Um, no, I just had a question. It doesn't hurt us to apply for this. It's not costing us anything, really.
Yeah, other than, and then there's, then the cost for the engineers to work on it.
Yes, all right.
You know.
Um, if I may, um, I'd like to move to authorize Mayor Becken to sign the drinking water asset management grant on behalf of the city of Sagatuck.
Your support?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Louis, seconded by, uh, Peterson to, uh, authorize the mayor to, uh, sign the, uh, grant application. Uh, any other questions? Would the clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Uh, for council information, I actually got a copy of this, uh, grant application with a request from the engineers from Fleece and Vandenberg, who was actually pinch hitting for John Moxie, who was on vacation. As Karen can say, that Karen can allude to, this was kind of a little bit of a dog and pony show last Wednesday afternoon, right before everybody was leaving for the Christmas holidays. That being said, my point is, I have a copy of this signature page here, which was emailed me by the engineers, Fleece and Vandenberg last Wednesday. I'm going to sign that, and I'm going to forward it to the engineers this evening because January twelfth thirty-one is the deadline on this. So, uh, it'll go out, uh, this evening, and I'll copy Karen on it. Okay? All righty. Hey, that being said, uh, moving on this evening, we have no consent agenda. We are now in the second opportunity for the, for public comments. So if anyone in the, uh, viewing audience wants to address council, uh, this stage, you can comment on any item that you please. Uh, when recognized, please state your name, uh, and your, uh, community that you reside in. So the floor is open for comments from the public to be recognized. I see Barry Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, listening to the, uh, discussion on the lead in the water, people may be of interest that this is the lead pipe that came out of my house about five years ago. And even when this was in, we didn't have a high level of lead detected uh, because they do the addition of the chemicals at the plant that coats it. But here's a house on Main Street in Sagatuck, and there's a lot more like this in town. And I think Karen identified that. That's what they look like. It's a little goose neck. So, and of course, then I had galvanized at the end, that wasn't good either. So that's, uh, that's what we're dealing with. This is a great thing. They were moving ahead with this, uh, study. And, uh, Daryl at the Cal Lake is, uh, very much on top of that. We discussed it at the last meeting. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Barry. Anyone else in the public, out in the public would like to address council?
I would.
Meg?
Yes, I would. Um, because I'm not sure I can speak later, so I'll speak first. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to explain a few things about the uh, petition information we sent you because I, I did not know who had it and who didn't have it. Um, and I figured if I put it in a packet, then you would all have it. Um, we are up to almost a thousand comments now on the petition. The petition was really addressed to the council to look at what a fine park we had if it had some repairs. And, uh, the question was, why can't we leave it as it was? Yeah, Garn has asked for a copy of the signers. Um, I will gladly take my copy to the city hall and they can make a copy. It's, um, at least twenty-five pages double sides so far. And going to be a few more pages. So I really don't want to run it on my computer. It consists of a number of locals' signatures. Some of you will laugh because you'll find our kids signed it because they have quite a, uh, love for our parks. Um, you'll find the weirdest places, uh, that have signs. We're just areas. But I'm figuring out, these are people who have been in and out of Sagatuck over the generations and who fell in love with our park as it is. Um, there are also seniors who have left the area now, but still have connections. And, uh, the longer you live in Sagatuck, the, the more you understand that once you're a resident here, it doesn't matter if you're physically living here or not, you're still involved. So those are the things I wanted to say. Um, are there any questions I can answer before you get to the other?
We, we do have the email.
Okay.
It has been shared with council by our city manager.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, yep. Uh, thank you, Meg. Uh, anyone else out there who wants to address council this evening?
Mr. Mayor Dan Fox?
Oh, Dan?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, very briefly, I just didn't want to let the night go by without pulling out a, the, the brightest highlighter I can find, figuratively speaking, to highlight what an amazing, absolutely stunning job Aaron did on that website. And most importantly,
Aaron's website.
In, in, in any, I, I'll, I'll bet you dollars to donuts on this, any municipality the size of Sagatuck, no city clerk has the ability to do what she did in an amazingly short period of time. That stuff, we've all been part of them. They're, they, those are requests for proposals for website development companies, and the numbers can sometimes be stunning that come back for the exact kind of work that was performed here by staff. So that is a huge deal and an amazing service to the city and cost effective, holy moly, you betcha. Good job, really, unbelievably good job. So that's it.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Uh, anyone else in the public would like to address us this evening? Okay, looks clear there. Aaron?
I do not see anybody else, but thank you, Mr. Fox.
Okay. Uh, okay, moving on to the next item is our boards and commissions report. Uh, speaking of Dan Fox, he's working overtime tonight, and he's going to give us the uh, most recent, uh, report from, uh, the Fire District. Dan?
Yeah, this was a report. I'll go as quickly as possible.
If you'd like me to flip to a specific page, let me know.
I don't think so, Aaron, unless somebody asks for something, we can go there. Uh, this is the summary of, of the major events or whatever, the, uh, major items on the agenda, the Fire District Administrative Board on the twenty-first of December meeting. As we always do, unlike you, finances were reviewed. This, the district is, year-to-date's monthly expense and revenue is in line, and there's really nothing untoward to discuss there. The Fire Chiefs report, most of it you have in your packet, and so I won't go through all of those pieces bit by bit, but it is, it is worth reading, and we obviously pay attention to it in the, in our meeting. One thing that's in there that I would, uh, direct your attention to is that, is the grants received. And in particular, I mean, it's a running total or whatever, but the, there's an item in there that over the past five years, the Fire District has received grants in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. It's an amazing accomplishment, and, and that credit goes, uh, to the chief and, and to the staff. Um, also an item that discussed in the meeting that wasn't in your packet, wouldn't have been in your packet anyway. We had a, an update from the chief on the, on repairs to the tanker truck, which is a twelve hundred gallons of water plus a pump to move the water. Uh, truck number twenty-one forty-one, the, we had to approve, uh, additional expense because the decay, uh, primarily rust and what have you uh, in the truck's body and in the piping was greater than first anticipated. Uh, so that was approved, but I make the point because going back to the ISO, then some people might say, well, why do you have fire tankers? We have fire hydrants, obviously. Outside of, outside of the cities, we don't necessarily have fire hydrants. And we have two of these tankers. The other one has been upgraded. This one will now be upgraded. We have two of them so that you can bicycle water from a pond or a, a, a nearby lake or whatever to, uh, to a fire in a, in the township, in a township property farm, whatnot. So, anyway, that's, that's tanker deal. Uh, a new business, we went through, as you, we shared with you earlier, the ISO thing, so I won't go back through that. The board was also updated on the planning for the replacement of one of the frontline fire engines, which is not all, they're all numbered twenty-one eleven, uh, which will reach its fifteen-year life expectancy, uh, in twenty twenty-three, so roughly, whatever, two years and such. Um, the board unanimously accepted the staff recommendation to accept a bid in the amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Yes, that's six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to acquire a custom pumper tanker manufactured by the Spencer Manufacturing Company. They're in South Haven. For delivery in the spring, summer period of twenty twenty-two, if things hold together, these, these are, these are all custom created uh, vehicles, and it's eighteen months start to finish, if everything goes as planned. Beyond that, we approved our scheduled, uh, meetings, and I, any, if there's any public listening, we, our meetings, not unlike the council meetings, are conducted under the Open Meetings Act, and we invite public comment just as you guys do, beginning and end of any meeting, and we're happy to have public join us. They're, they're now on Zoom as long as this goes on. We approved a letter which ran on the, in the twenty-fourth of December, Christmas Eve issue of the commercial record related to what, uh, Lieutenant Enfield discussed briefly, the inspections uh, of the high school and Douglas Elementary School related to the effectiveness and the interoperability of emergency radio operation within those facilities. The, you can read that. I would encourage you to read that letter because, uh, Chief Janik and Deputy Chief Mantles, Chris Mantles, took statewide leadership in craft, helping craft the, a bill that will be presented to the, at the State House after the first of the year to tighten and specify uh, the requirements for that interoperability, meaning all emergency responders inside a school for whatever emergency there is are able to communicate effectively with each other without the impediments of, uh, you know, building or walls or, or finishes or whatever that don't allow the radios to go through. That all came about originally when the World Trade Center, uh, attacks took place, and they had major problems with that inside those buildings. Michigan had acted upon that, but they had not specifically done it for a host of reasons. It's too ordinary to get into for schools. And at, at the, again, at the behest of Chief Janik, those requirements are being, we'll get to the State House for a vote. But more importantly, or as importantly, he set up with the Alleghen County Sheriff's Office himself, Douglas Police, the Mayor of Douglas, the architectural firm and construction firm involved in the, uh, the redos on those two buildings. An evaluation as, as Brett Enfield said, of whether the problem exists and to what extent and so forth. And the results, which Brett didn't share with you, are good news, bad news, maybe both are good news in a way. The good news is there were no difficulties in interoperability in the high school. On the other hand, in the grade school, there are significant problems with blocks to communications and whatever. Those are being, have been, uh, have been given over to the, to the, uh, school superintendent, as well as to, to his construction and engineering personnel. And those will be, we're, we're sure will be addressed. So, and as I say, in the sense that it's bad news that it exists, it's good news that it's going to get addressed. So it's a, it's a major, really a major accomplishment in what the Fire District mission puts forth as community risk reduction, especially uh, we're with a vulnerable situation with young children, and in particular Douglas Elementary School, younger children. Uh, so that, uh, we also briefly discussed a pending Board of Appeals, Fire District Board of Appeals case that involves property in the township, the development in the township. And finally, uh, Chief Janik shared, uh, a, a Christmas card from the family that was renting the house in Sagatuck that suffered a serious chimney fire that actually got into the attic, uh, earlier, first week in the month of December. that suffered a serious chimney fire that actually got into the attic, uh, earlier, first week in the month of December. The fire district team saved the house in what chief called a quote terrific fire knockdown. The thank you Christmas card had a big bag of toys with the, uh, and it was a long personal note as well, but it has this big bag of toys with a printed line that said, at the bottom said, gonna need a bigger bag, referring to Santa Claus needing a bigger bag. And the, and the family had, had, or bigger chimney. And the family had crossed out, uh, we're going to need, instead of bigger chimney, we're going to need a cleaner chimney. So anyway. That's it. Unless you have questions, I can try and answer.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, Dan regarding fire district?
Hey Dan? Yeah, Dan, I had a quick question and I was just curious, just more curious than anything. On the first page of the information that we got, the email from the chief. Let's see, it's bullet number one, two, three, four. Talks about our boats are now out of the water. So any water or ice rescue calls will be handled by trailer boats, 2192 or 2193 from the station. I'm just curious, how often does it occur that boats go back into the water this time of year for a rescue? Just curious.
You mean that there's, I, I'd have to defer to them to give you the answer. I, when I once, I once found actually, or one of my first meetings at the fire district on the board, I asked the question about, because there are significant assets put against fire based rescue, whether it's personnel rescue or the fireboat, uh, water, apply water to fire, fires on the, on the waterfront. And I asked the, the question about how often do we employ those resources? And the response, which I think is, it's helpful to understand this perspective because it's the department's perspective born of that community risk reduction and born of a sense, a real sense of responsibility for the safety of the public. Chief Janik said, why do you have, why bother having smoke detectors in your house? Have you ever had a fire in your house? I never had, you know, you know, I'm, I don't want to say how old I am, never had a fire. Why don't you, you know, why, why spend money on smoke detectors? Because you'd never have a fire. And that the answer is the same for those fireboats. It's because when it happens, and, and in the case of the, the ones you're talking about, the, the inflatables that can get out uh, in open water or be used as part of an over the ice rescue. Without them, without that resource, I'm, in the event that emergency takes place, somebody's going to die. That's all there is to it. There's, because there's no backup. There's no backup from the coast guard. The police boat is gone in the winter. There's nobody. So that's, so you, you, you apply it against that risk, which is this, I, I mean, I think it's a fairly, it's a, it's an important risk. So that's his best, that's the best answer I can give you, Garnet.
Got it. Just curious.
That's why.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Uh, do we have a planning commission report this evening?
We didn't meet.
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, historical committee report?
Nope. Nothing.
Nothing.
Neither, nothing for recycling.
Okay. Do you have, do you, do you have a report for recycling?
No, we'll meet on the 13th of January again.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I think the other, only other board, anybody else have anything from boards and commissions? Me, because Cal Lake, uh, met, uh, a week ago today. We are reviewing our paid time off policy for our manager. Uh, we did have a meeting that included our, uh, attorney who works with us on our, uh, personnel, uh, employee handbook and personnel manuals, et cetera. And, uh, uh, basically we don't want to get in a similar situation that we did with the past Sodik city manager. And so, uh, we're also implementing a, uh, a, uh, opportunity for the manager to buy an increased, uh, PTO under certain guidelines uh, that are being set forth by the attorney. So, uh, that, that, that's been done as a, a comprehensive look at our, uh, employee manual, uh, also. The board, uh, uh, passed a motion to spend $136,000 for a, uh, new international, uh, brain boom truck. Uh, the, it's replacing a model at, uh, a, a truck that's, uh, well, it's a 1980s sometime. So, uh, it's long past due. Uh, this is part of a funding that we've been putting together for several years. This will be an important, uh, addition to the, uh, fleet at, at Cal Lake because not only will it assist lifting heavy pumps and et cetera in the, uh, lift stations and moving things around in our, at our, uh, facility. It's also going to include an, uh, a portable and a generator attached to it, a welding mechanism, air, air compressor. And everything will run off a diesel. So it's a self-contained unit. Uh, we had five bids and 136,000 was a low bid. The high bid was 162,000. We're also purchasing a new pickup truck, uh, as just a normal, uh, replacement in our, of, in our service fleet. January will be, January and probably in February, we'll be having two meetings. Uh, Cal Lake's fiscal year is a little different than the city fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from March 1 to, uh, February 29 or 28 or whatever, you know, leap year comes into play. Uh, so we'll be starting our budget, uh, analysis, uh, at an extra meeting in January. Uh, this is a time where we look at revenues versus expenditures. Uh, we review rates. Uh, so this is the time that we go in and make determinations based on future planning, uh, et cetera. If we're going to have to make any type of rate increase to water and sewer rates. It, it, it looks real optimistic regarding the rate preliminarily. We'll get into the details. We haven't had a rate, the rate increase for sewer water rates in two years. And hopefully it, it, it'll continue or there'll be only a modest increase. Well, we'll see once we get through our, our workshop. Uh, that does it for Cal Lake. Yes. That takes care of our agenda this evening. I'll open it to council comments. If there's anyone who likes to, either council members who want to address this evening?
Mayor?
Yeah, Scott?
Um, I just compliments to Scott and the DPW crew on their response to the snow Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. I'm sure they weren't dreaming of a white Christmas because God is on Christmas Eves, but a big thank you to Scott and the team.
Okay. Thanks. Ken?
Mayor, um, Dan Fox said it extremely well. So I, I, I really can't add on to his eloquence about the, uh, new website that we have. It is just phenomenal. And again, I'd like to, uh, compliment Aaron on a, on a job well done. Exceeded our expectations, I'm sure. Very good.
Right. Hey, Christine, Chris?
Yes. Uh, I'd like to echo what people have said. We have an outstanding staff. And, and this last week with all the things that popped up, including the, the white snow and some of the Christmas lights going out and the new website, they have just stepped up and gone beyond. So thank you very much and happy new year.
All right. Any other colleague?
Mayor, um, I just want to say I'm really excited that we have the tri-community bike trail meeting Wednesday. Ken and I will be rolling up for that, uh, Wednesday at two o'clock. And I just want to thank, uh, Cindy and Karen and Erin for their, uh, help, um, administratively getting the ducks in the row.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Uh, anyone else in council?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, this is Garnet. Just, uh, happy new year, everybody. I don't know about you, but I've never been happier to see a year end than 2020. So I'm looking forward to COVID vaccine, vaccines, everybody getting their shots, being able to get back out and actually hug somebody. So, uh, happy new year.
All right. All right. Anyone else on council? If not, we'll, uh, on behalf of the city of Sagatuck and city council, I'd like to wish all our viewers and citizens a happy new year and echo Garnet's hope that, uh, 2021 will be a big improvement over 2020. Uh, can I motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Truster, seconded by Dean to adjourn the meeting. Time of 8:41 PM. Clerk, please color roll.
Uh, Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening and happy new year to all.
Happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.